Good afternoon and welcome to the 17th meeting of City Council. This is a virtual meeting during our COVID-19 emergency. City Hall is open to the public with reduced capacity and physical distancing requirements. Meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city website. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communications supports for council, standing, advisory committee meetings, and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. I'll look for any disclosures of pecuniary interest, please. Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship, with respect to... With respect to item 4.1 on the 16th meeting, the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, with respect to Mass Bylaw, I'll declare conflict as the National Sex Law and Health Unit has been fairly involved with this debate, and National Sex Law and Health Unit is my employer.
Thank you, so noted. Any other declarations? Counselor Morgan.
Yes, on the 16th report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, item 12 in that report, 4.5, consideration of appointment to the London Public Library Board, one of the candidates in the process is a member of the Board of Governors of my employer, Western University, so I'll continue to declare on that item.
So noted, thank you. Any other declarations? Seeing none, thank you. I have two recognitions I'd like to call on. First, Counselor Pelosi, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Recognizing that tomorrow, September 30th, is Orange Shirt Day. Orange Shirt Day is an event created in 2013 designed to educate, promote, and to make people aware of the Indian residential school system and the impact it's had on our indigenous communities for over a century. Beginning in 1883, the government began funding Indian residential schools across Canada. When the separation from children their parents was resisted, the government responded by making school attendance compulsory in 1894 and empowered the RCMP to seize the children. It wasn't that long ago for the last federally operated residential school closed in 1996. Residential schools operated across the country in every territory with the exception of New Brunswick and PEI. Today, as we move towards reconciliation, it's important to recognize the intergenerational trauma that has been inflicted on those in our communities and working to make it better.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Counselor Hopkins, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, for allowing me to recognize National Seniors' Day, which is October the first, which is on Thursday. Each year, October the first is set aside to recognize the important contributions of Canadian seniors intended to coincide with the United Nations International Day of Older Persons. National Seniors' Day gives us all an opportunity to pay tribute to the seniors who have helped to build our country and to raise awareness of their concerns. One of the best ways to celebrate National Seniors' Day is to show our appreciation for older Canadians and to ensure that our cities and communities are good places to grow up and to become old. London was one of the first cities in Canada to adopt the age-friendly London Network, and my mentor Gina Barber was part of that back in 2013 when the inaugural meeting was launched. There are currently 165 members, including in this group, and 80 agencies or organizations who are working to implement the Age-Friendly London Plan, and I hope that plan will continue. This year, the COVID-19 pandemic and the disproportionate impact it has had on older Canadians will continue, and the challenges will remain in our long-term care homes as well as identifying and resolving the elder abuse in our communities, which is not acceptable. So with that, we can all play a part in becoming knowledgeable and dedicated to our seniors in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, there are no confidential matters to be considered in public, and there are no matters to be dealt with in closed session. So I now look to the minutes of the meeting held on September 15th, 2020, as we put that on the floor, by looking for a mover, please. Counselor Van Merwebergen, seconded by Counselor Lehman. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I will call the vote. In a moment. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Counselor Saleh. Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
Yes.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins. Counselor Turner. Excuse me, Counselor Van Merwebergen, get it in the right order.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi.
Yes.
Counselor Kaia Vaga. Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
My vote, yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries, 13 to zero.
Colleagues, there are three communications, two that are related to item 14, which is 310 in your agenda, of the 14th report of the Planning and Environment Committee having to do with 556 Wellington Street, and one related to item 15, which is 3.11 in your agenda, of the 14th report of the Planning and Environment Committee having to do with the Silverleaf subdivision. I'm looking for a motion to refer those communications to be considered in conjunction with the items that are on the agenda. Is there a mover, please? Counselor Van Holst, seconded by Counselor Lewis. Any discussion? Then I will call the vote. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
Yes.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins, excuse me, you don't have to do it twice. Counselor Turner. Counselor Van Merwebergen.
Yes.
Counselor Turner. You get to vote twice.
I'm voting no earlier.
Thank you. Counselor Pelosi.
Yes.
I don't... I'm not sure where we are at. I just was able to log in now.
We are voting to receive the three communications that have been received and put them in the appropriate points on the agenda.
Yes.
I vote yes. Is Counselor Hillier in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Closing the vote, the motion carries, 14 to zero.
Colleagues, there are no motions to which notice is given. Therefore, I'll turn to the 14th report of the Planning and Environment Committee and turn it over to Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I'm going to pull item number 11 from the council agenda or 3.7 from the report that has come with no recommendation from committee, and I believe Counselor Turner asked me to pull that anyway. We'd like to make a motion, and that is all I have heard so far. Nobody else has indicated. I see Counselor Van Holst with his hand up.
And Counselor Van Holst.
Yes, could I move... Well, 4.1, I think it's 4.1. It's regarding the heritage permit for 556 Wellington Street.
Thank you.
I noticed that that item comes up at 2.2 and 4.1, so...
All right, thank you.
Your Worship, item number 15 as well will need to be called separately as there's a notice motion related to that item.
So to be clear, I am showing 3.7, 3.11, and 4.1. That's what I have on my list. Is that what you have?
Yes, Counselor Van Holst did mention 2.1 as well in his discussion.
Then, thank you very much. Over to you, Counselor Cassidy. Would anyone, like any other items, be dealt with separately? Over to you, Counselor Cassidy.
I think it's 2.2 Counselor Van Holst was looking for.
Okay, we're just getting clarification from the clerk on the items, please. Go ahead, clerk.
According to what I have, the items that are pulled is item four, which is 2.2, item 11, which is 3.7, item 14, which is 3.10, and item 15, which is 3.11.
So noted. Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
Okay, and Counselor Van Holst also indicated item 16 just now as well. So what I'm putting on the floor now is the entire planning report except for items four, 11, 14, 15, and 16. So what I'm putting on the floor now is the entire planning report except for items four, 11, 14, 15, and 16.
Any comments or discussion relating to the items on the consent agenda or on the agenda that have not been pulled?
I'm sorry if I caused any confusion. I wasn't looking at the added agenda. I was looking at the printed one, which might be off by number. So, but I think.
That's fine. That's fine. Then any other comments or questions? Thank you, Counselor Van Holst. We'll make sure they're all dealt with. Seeing none, then we'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
Yes.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Van Mirberg.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi.
Yes.
Counselor Kaia Vaga.
Yes.
Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries, 14 to zero.
Back to you, Counselor Cassidy.
That gives us item four from the council agenda or 2.2 from the committee report, which was, it was just a report that the committee received for information, and it was an information report that city staff, heritage, the heritage planners put together to go to the Latch meeting. So it was a city staff report that went to the London Advisory Committee on Heritage to help them deal with item 556 Wellington Street when it was on their agenda, and Planning Committee received it for information.
Thank you. Comments or questions about this? To receive. Seeing none, we'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis. I'm looking for a mo- So you're putting this on the floor then, Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
There is no second on this, therefore we'll go to the vote. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
I'm very unclear on what we're voting on and how it relates to 556 Wellington Street. The explanation didn't satisfy me. I'm gonna vote no.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes.
Counselor Van Mirberg.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi.
Yes.
Counselor Kaia Vaga.
Yes.
Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries, 13 to one.
Back to you, Counselor Cassidy.
Oh, item 11 was a demolition request for a property in a heritage conservation district. It failed on a tie vote, so there is no recommendation coming from committee. However, Counselor Turner indicated to me prior to the meeting that he has a motion to bring forward.
Counselor Turner.
Your worship, this item was contentious at our committee, so as the chair indicated, it came forward without recommendation. I'd like to make the recommendation, the movement, motion, that the demolition permit for 120 York Street be denied. And if I have a second, then I'll continue to talk afterwards.
Thank you. So this is a motion that the demolition permit be denied. Is there a second for that? Counselor Kaia Vaga. Discussion. Counselor Turner.
Your worship, thanks Counselor Kaia Vaga for the seconding here. The discussion here centered around demolition in the core. The reason that it came to us for a demolition permit is because buildings in the downtown area are all within the downtown heritage area and therefore require consent for those demolitions. Here's the challenge with this, is that when we did the heritage impact assessment, which I don't disagree with the findings of them, really the building itself in its own right doesn't have any heritage attributes to it. However, the heritage district has an attribute to it as a whole. And where we demolish buildings, we create holes in the streetscape and create significant continuity issues within the area. Our downtown parking study that we went through to try and take a look at how much parking we'd need in what areas indicated in this zone that we would project a surplus of parking in the core. And so it was not an area that was advanced for concentration of new parking spaces. Also, in our parking study, the intent of that study was for the municipality to engage with stakeholders to try and find places where parking could be and offer for public offerings. The intent of this is for the property owner to demolish the building currently on that site, create a surface parking lot that would service the applicant's own building. And there was no mention of publicly accessible or that this would contribute to the framework of parking within the core. This also goes against one of our pretty strong policies, not only in the London Plan, which is currently under appeal, but in the 1989 official plan. In item 4.1.10, parking in the official plan, it says on sub four, surface parking lots, "The creation of new surface-level commercial and/or accessory parking lots within the downtown shopping area will be discouraged." So basically, we're saying that we will not create new surface parking lots. Also, right at the outset of it, it says that "City on its own or in cooperation with private landowners may participate in the acquisition and development of land within downtown for the purpose of public off-street parking." This is not one of those. So when you take a look at the heritage impact assessment, the question is, does the building itself contribute to the heritage fabric of downtown? If not, then the question is, what contributes more to the heritage fabric of downtown? A building? Or a parking lot? And I would argue that a parking lot contributes nothing to a heritage area. It contributes nothing to our downtown. The applicant has actually in the past demolished a building with the promise of putting a new building up. That was two terms of council ago. Still nothing on that site on Queen's Dock. So I have no faith that at any point that this will be developed into another building. There's a challenge to that, is that it's contrary to our policies. It's contrary to good urban planning and to building in the core. We have identified the areas in which we need to enhance the amount of parking in the core. This is not one of those. It's shown to be in a surplus position for parking spots. So I'm making the motion that we deny the demolition permit as it's inconsistent with our policies.
Thank you. I have Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Thank you. I can certainly appreciate where Counselor Turner and Counselor Kaia Vaga are coming from in not wanting to see more surface parking lots in this particular part of downtown. But I am convinced by the report from the heritage planners, which is recommending that the permit be given and that the demolition be allowed to proceed. And also that the Latch, at their meeting earlier in September, also agreed that the demolition permit should go ahead. And I think Counselor Squire has said in the past, when we're dealing with these heritage matters, we really need to look at the specifics of each particular case. I have tried to do that in this particular case, and I think that this building is one that can be let go, and the demolition permit should be allowed. I say that as someone who's not particularly keen on surface parking in the downtown or seeing more surface parking in this particular part of downtown. But the issue in front of us is whether the demolition should go ahead. Our heritage planning staff are recommending that it should be. So is the London Advisory Committee on Heritage. I'm convinced by the arguments in the report that this building is not one that needs to be retained. And the Heritage Conservation District is not there to retain all buildings, nor is, you know, the situation of downtown parking, that there will not ever be any new surface parking lots or that things are not going to change. I think we're in a period of transition, and we will constantly be in a period of transition in downtown. And over time, what we want to see is better parking, a structured and underground parking and not surface parking. But this particular lot, property, I don't think the building needs to be retained, and I'm gonna vote against this motion, and I'll be happy to move that the permit be granted if this one fails.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
Just a couple of comments. I agree with the deputy mayor and his reasoning. The other thing is, I really want to talk about policy again, and I'm gonna say this, and I've said it before, a policy is not a law. One more time, a policy is not a law. It's a guidance. And in this particular case, the policy is, was read by Counselor Turner, says, "Surface parking lots are to be discouraged." Doesn't say prohibited. Doesn't say anything like that. It's language that says, yeah, generally, we're gonna discourage them. But please, don't anyone think that our policies are against all surface parking lots, because that's just not an accurate, that's not an accurate thing. So I agree. This is a matter that I have very little difficulty with in these circumstances, and I'll not be supporting the motion, I'll be supporting demolition permit.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. I'll be really brief, because Counselor Squire and Deputy Mayor Helmer covered off pretty much everything that I wanted to say. The only thing that I want to add is, we know that we have a surplus of vacant buildings in the downtown core right now, whether this owner or other owners. If we want them to be able to attract tenants to fill these locations, that is going to require us allowing them to provide some level of parking for those tenants to use. Yes, it'd be great if everybody could get there by other means, but that's not the reality. People are going to drive to some of these locations. They are going to need parking for their staff or customers, clients, for those businesses that locate there. To me, if we're gonna have surface parking anywhere, York is really a good location for it, because it is really a vehicle corridor in and out of the core. We don't have a number of shops facing on New York Street. We don't have a number of residences facing on New York Street in this area. It really is an artery in and out of the downtown. So if people want to leave their cars there and walk a couple blocks to their destination, to me, that's a win. So I won't be supporting the denial, and if the deputy mayor needs a second for the staff recommendation, he has it in me.
Well, let's get there first. We'll start with Counselor Van Holst, please.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, looking this, I think it can be argued that this demolition would be contrary to our policies, but I don't think it's actually contrary to our policies. As Counselor Squire pointed out, and we've got a heritage preservation district. It's not an everything preservation district. As a matter of fact, taking this building down might allow people to actually see from some vantage point the heritage that we do have. So there's a less is more argument to be made. I personally have an attachment to this building, having worked there and hosted a comedy show regularly in that location, but it's not. Again, I'm happy to sacrifice those memories in favor of London moving forward. So by taking this down, we leave a little more room for other things to come up more quickly, and that's what we would like to see, not have these things linger around longer than they need to. So I'll also be voting against this and in favor of the demolition. Thank you.
Regardless, we hope you'll keep your memories. Counselor Van Holst, Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I really appreciate the debate that we're having here at council on this demolition request. And I really haven't heard anything to sway me from my decision at committee. One of the things, I guess we can argue our policies, are they contrary or not? I think we can go down that road and debate it either way. To me, what I appreciated, I did acknowledge the reports coming from Latch. The heritage designation is not a high designation in this area. But I do understand this area. We have a lot of parking in this area. Do we need more parking? We're not saying that we're gonna have structured parking here even. No, we're gonna probably have surface parking. So I'm not convinced that we should just demolish it and keep a parking, another parking lot in this area. When people come to our city, they often mention the downtown has tons of parking. I know there's certain areas that are classified in a higher category, but this area has a lot of parking. And the other part to this is the building, there's tenants in this building as well. So for me, is there a big consideration here to tear down the building and put up a parking spot? I'm just not convinced that's the way we should go. So I am going to be supporting denying this demolition.
Thank you. I have another speakers on the list, therefore I'm prepared to call the vote. Counselor Van Holst.
Your worship, I think Counselor Kaia Vaga wanted to speak, and I'd like to wrap up if I could.
Sure, and I'm sorry, I didn't see a hand up there, Counselor Kaia Vaga. I would remind colleagues, please, to use the, if it's working for you, the technology, because that's what I monitor mostly. Counselor Kaia Vaga, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, it's really difficult to find the hand raising button on the computer than it is on the phone, so. But I did put up my hand a couple times. I think, for me, some of the comments I wanted to make, and I made a committee on this specific subject, are that, you know, not only are we trying to encourage best practices in terms of having a good strategy for the downtown, I also do believe that we also have to encourage applicants to actually commit to building, to developing when they do say that they will develop. And I'm against the demolition of this building specifically because we don't want any more sitting lots in the downtown or surface lots. I know that part of the strategy that we talked about last year, when we talked about parking strategy downtown, was also considering multi-level, multi-level or more of an approach into having parking in the downtown. But I also did ask at committee whether or not we would get some type of commitment from the applicant for building, because in the past, we have noticed the applicant requesting to develop and having stalled projects or projects that have not been developed for a number of years. And this is one of the skepticism that I had, and I talked about at committee, and I still hold to this minute, which is why I would rather see staff or us have a better policy on how to encourage people to build when they say they're gonna build before we continue to demolish things in the downtown and have many empty surfaces. We're building, you know, transit in that area, transportation. We're trying to build our streets and our infrastructure in the downtown so that more people can have access to it, whether it be through cars, through bikes, through walking. And it would not be a good plan to have empty surface lots in the downtown. So I think in terms of parking strategies, I think my colleague Hopkins did mention that there's parking, but there's, if we're going to attract more people to come and work downtown, I think an approach of multi-level parking would be a good approach. But at the same time, having a surface lot that's just gonna sit there because people apply for demolition and do not build is a huge problem in the downtown. And that is where my concerns come in with this specific demolition application, and I continue to hold those beliefs, and I understand and respect my colleagues' choices. But I just wanted to explain that as a downtown councillor, where my concerns come from.
Thank you. With no other speakers, can I turn it to Counselor Turner for a round, please?
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick question through to the clerk. How does an official plan- Um, how does an official plan, uh, become ratified? Do, do we set a bylaw? Uh, does it get approved by the minister in the province?
Clerk, do you want to handle that?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, an official plan and any amendments to the official plan are adopted by bylaw. And the official plan, uh, does need to be approved by the minister.
Thank you, your worship, uh, thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. Uh, so I asked that, uh, just in response to Counselor Squire's statement about the official policies aren't laws, well, they're bylaws. And, uh, they, um, actually from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, it says, uh, right here. Once an official plan is in effect, it guides all of the municipal's plan, municipalities' planning decisions. It means that the local council and municipal officials must follow the plan. All new services, sewers or water mains, for example, must conform to the plan and all bylaws, including zoning and related bylaws, must conform with the official plan. So it's kind of the, that higher level that everything else is nested within. So do we have the prerogative to deviate from the official plan? Yeah, with official plan amendments and with zoning bylaw amendments. That's, uh, that, that's how we, uh, affect these things. So do we have the ability to, uh, to take some of those interpretive statements? Where it says shall be discouraged, um, as opposed to the must? Well, that's exactly what's happening right now at the LPAT. Uh, where the developers are mounting a fairly significant appeal to the London plan. And because of the, the way the wording is, is placed, uh, which to them handcuffs them a little bit too much in some, some places. Where we've actually used definitive language like must and shall. So, uh, so when, when we get towards wording like discouraged and things like that, it, it does weaken it. And it does give us that latitude, but make no mistake. This is the guiding document of our city. And there's importance to it. Uh, the last sentence in this paragraph says, an official plan's not set forever. The plan can be changed or amended as the community's needs change. Absolutely. So if we see that our guiding document for the development of the city and its future isn't appropriate. Then we're compelled to change it. But until that time, I think we're compelled to follow it. And that's a really important principle. It's not necessarily the heritage aspect itself. It's the question of how we develop and maintain the core. A couple of other statements were made, like York's a vehicle corridor, uh, that was from Counselor Lewis. Yeah, it is, uh, and that's probably one of the things that's worst about York Street, and now we're just exacerbating it. Um, and, uh, Counselor Van Holst talked about in favor of moving London forward. This is actually contrary to most contemporary city building policies. It's, it's not moving us forward, it's moving us back to the fifties. So I, I'm vehemently against it. I recognize where council is probably going to go with this. I'm disappointed in that. Um, but, uh, those are my statements. I think, uh, it's really important, uh, as a council. Because we've been consistently and, and very frequently deviating from the official plan. Uh, and, uh, and that, that's concerning to me because it shows that as a council, we don't have a collective vision. It's very divergent and it's going to be very, um, contentious, uh, over the next two years to come.
Thank you. We will call the vote. Counselor Van Holst.
And again, just for clarity for everyone, a no vote, uh, means that we will then, uh, we can then. Move for demolition afterwards.
What, what it means is that if we defeat this motion, uh, we would consider another motion depending on what that looks like, uh, counselor.
Yes.
Your vote, please.
No.
Counselor Lewis.
No.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
No.
Counselor Cassidy.
No.
Counselor Squire.
No.
Counselor Morgan.
No.
Counselor Lehman.
No.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes.
Counselor Van Mirbergin.
No.
Counselor Turner.
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi.
No.
Counselor Kayabaga.
Yes.
Counselor Hillier.
No.
I vote no.
Closing the vote and the motion is lost on a failed vote of three to eleven.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Uh, I'm, I'll be put forward the staff recommendation, which is to allow the demolition to proceed.
And that's seconded by Counselor Lewis. Comments or questions, colleagues? Counselor Van Holst, is your hand up from the earlier, or do you wish to speak to this again?
Oh, just one, one point. I want to thank, uh, Counselor Turner, who's always an, an excellent debater. But, uh, and through his words, actually discouraged, um, the, uh, this, uh, this move. Which means now we're in absolute alignment with our policy, so thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I will call the vote. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
Yes.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins.
No.
Counselor Van Mirbergin.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
No.
Counselor Pelosi.
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga.
Uh, no.
Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries eleven to three.
Counselor Cassidy.
That brings us to item fourteen on the planning, or on the, on the council agenda, three point one zero on the planning report. Uh, this was a, uh, there were three different reports, all pertaining to this same address. Uh, so therefore there may be, that may have caused some confusion for some counselors. Uh, but item fourteen, uh, was a public site plan, a meeting, a public site plan application. For, uh, five fifty-six Wellington Street. Um, this did not come to us for rezoning. The land was already zoned, uh, for this particular kind of development. However, because it's in a heritage conservation district, it automatically requires a public site plan meeting. So at the public site plan meeting, uh, a number of people came out and expressed their concerns with the development or certain aspects of the development. As we do at public site plan meetings, all of those concerns and suggestions to the planning authority, which is our city staff. Those were all, um, communicated to the planning authority who took note and, and, um. And, and they will move forward as, as the process moves on through, based on the comments that they received. At the public site plan meeting. And so the, the two, the part A and part B of the motion that was passed at the planning committee. Reflects the comments and suggestions that were, uh, given to the planning authority. And I will put that on the floor, your worship.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing no waves.
I, I do have a question, uh.
Counselor Van Holst, go ahead.
Yes, uh, you, you, your worship, so I believe that. That one of, part of what was, uh, moved in this section was that they, um. That an application under section twenty-two of the Heritage Act to construct two high, two high-rise buildings on the property located five side. Sixth street within the West Woodfield Heritage Conservation District be refused. And, uh, it's that, that portion which I would like to, that refusal that I would like to vote against.
So hold on, uh, if you, just a moment, please, Counselor Van Holst, I'll turn to the clerk.
Uh, your worship, that would be, uh, item sixteen, four point one.
So a little later on in the agenda, I think that item is dealt with. Counselor Van Holst.
Okay, well.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
Yes.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes.
Counselor Van Mirbergin.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi.
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga.
Yes.
Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. That brings us to, uh, number fifteen on the council agenda, uh, three point one one, the Silver Leaf subdivision. Uh, we asked staff, the council asked staff to go back and look at safety concerns that were raised by residents in the Silver Leaf. Silver Leaf subdivision, uh, staff came back with the report and with, um. Uh, issues and considerations and, uh, the planning committee received that report. So I'll put that report on the floor. I don't know how the process goes with Counselor Van Holst's motion. I will let the clerk advise on that.
Clerk, do you want us to advise since we have a, a notice of motion from Counselor Van Holst?
Uh, thank you, your worship. The, uh, the recommendation from planning committee, uh, can be dealt with first. Uh, which was, which basically to receive the report, receive the delegation and receive the communication. Um, from Counselor Van Holst. So once that has been dealt with, then Counselor Van Holst can move ahead with his notice of motion.
So colleagues, are we all clear on that? Yes, so we'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
Yes.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes.
Counselor Van Mirbergin.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi.
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga.
Yes.
Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
So I think now we can, uh, we can look to Counselor Van Holst's motion. Counselor Van Holst.
Uh, thank you very much, your worship. So this item, uh, is the one where we had voted, uh, against. Um, allowing the subdivision to, allowing just one sidewalk along, along these streets. And I was one who voted, uh, uh, with, uh, with that. Um, however, uh, some, much more information seems to have come forward since that time. And, uh, so I, I think that warrants, uh, uh, reconsideration. So some of the reasons I've.
So sorry, Counselor Van Holst, this is not a debate. You're putting the motion on the floor and, uh.
Well, I, I believe I can, uh, I can state the reasons why I'm, uh. I believe our, okay, I, I thought I.
No, that when it, when. You, what we're doing is we're putting reconsideration on the floor, uh, so that's in the form of a motion. Without, uh, any, uh, commentary beyond that, please.
So, um, ma- anyway, that's why I put commentary in the, uh, in the communication. I put that on the floor. I'll, uh, I'll look for a seconder. I believe I have one.
Is there a seconder? Counselor Van Mirbergin. So we're going to call the question. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Helmer.
No.
Counselor Cassidy.
No.
Counselor Squire.
Yes.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins.
No.
Counselor Van Mirbergin.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
No.
Counselor Pelosi.
No.
Counselor Kayabaga.
No.
Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Closing the vote and the reconsideration does not carry at a vote of eight, six, ten votes in yes would have been required. So the reconsideration fails.
Thank you, colleagues. Counselor Cassidy.
Uh, so that brings us to the final item on the planning report, which is sixteen on the council agenda. It is the report from the London Advisory Committee on Heritage. Um, there were a few, uh, items in there and one of them was, uh, that we followed the Latch recommendation. Which also included a staff recommendation, which was the earlier report. Um, uh, recommending refusal of the, um, heritage alteration permit. And I will put that on the floor, your worship, that whole thing.
Thank you. I'm wondering, uh, firstly, if there's any discussion or if this should be separated as two items, but why don't we hear from you? Any comments or questions? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. Um, uh, like Counselor Van Holst, uh, my concern is the refusal of the heritage alteration permit. Uh, for the application at five five-six Wellington. Uh, I'm just going to, through you, ask the chair of, of the committee, uh, if she's. Would like to highlight sections that she thinks needs, need to be pulled to address that, so that the rest of the report from Latch can be received. Or if we should deal with this altogether.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking based on your comment that it should be, uh, separated. Counselor Cassidy, you comfortable with that?
Absolutely, your worship. I believe that is, um, item A. Yeah, item A is where, uh, the recommendation, uh, for the refusal of the heritage alteration permit. And, uh, the other items are, are different items that came through from the Latch, uh, report.
So then why don't we deal with, uh, why don't we deal with all but the recommendation with respect to, uh, five fifty-six Wellington? Uh, any other comments or questions with that balance of that report? I believe I've got Counselor Van Holst and Counselor Helmer, but are you looking to speak to the, uh, the second portion of the, of this, uh, report? That is to say, five fifty-six Wellington? Deputy Mayor, I want to be, okay, so we're dealing with all but that item. Are there any speakers to? The balance of the report with that exclusion? Deputy Mayor, your hand is still up? It is now down. So I see none, I will, uh, call the vote. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
Yes.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes.
Counselor Van Mirbergin.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi.
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga.
Yes.
Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Back to you, Counselor Cassidy.
Okay, so on item A, um, the, it was on the Latch agenda that, uh, the recommendation from the advisory committee. Uh, was that the heritage alteration permit be refused. The Advisory Committee on Heritage, um, as part of their decision-making. Used a report that was prepared by city staff, our heritage planners who attended the Latch meeting. And that was the companion report that was, um, starting at page nineteen on the original planning agenda. And they, uh, the reasons for the heritage planner in re- in recommending refusal of the heritage alteration permit. Were very clear, um, uh, under the conclusion, there were four bullet points that the proposed development is not responsive. To the immediate heritage context and its character, it does not conserve the designated heritage properties. And does not respect their scale, form and port, that was, uh, earlier on the agenda, that was provided to the London Advisory Committee on Heritage. And that helped them, uh, come to their recommendation, which they brought to the planning committee. And that helped inform our decision, which is our recommendation to council, that the, um, uh, heritage alteration permit be refused.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? I believe Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Uh, thank you. We had, uh, a very good discussion about this item and the associated site plan. And, uh, I, I do think that people are going to have different views on the heritage impacts here. But as I did with the one twenty York Street issue, I'm trying to address just the heritage aspects of this particular development. Uh, I'm persuaded by the staff report that the mitigation is not there. I think the applicant, you know, Great West Life Realty and the consultants who are working on this file, they're trying. To meet the requirements of the Heritage Conservation District. Uh, but I think that the gap is, is too large right now, so I think refusal is the only, uh, option I'm willing to support. Um, I do think we're in a very tricky situation here where you have zoning to allow a very tall building. And a heritage conservation district that encourages transition down to. that encourages transition down to the existing buildings and much smaller, shorter buildings than were allowed under zoning. And so that conflict is going to have to be resolved one way or the other, either here tonight at council or, or at LPAT if the matter goes to a hearing. And I do think that they are fundamentally in conflict with each other on the heritage issue specifically, which is what's in front of us today, right now. I support refusal. The Latch recommendation is to refuse. The staff recommendation is to refuse. I do think the applicant and the planning consultants have made good efforts to meet the requirements in the Heritage Conservation District, but it's a very big gap to try and cover between what's allowed under the zoning and what is shaped by the Heritage Conservation District guidelines, which is something in the neighborhood of, you know, eight to ten stories, not a thirty story office building, which is what's allowed under the zoning. So I'm going to vote to refuse the heritage alteration permit. I do think that one way or the other, this is probably headed to the LPAT.
Thank you. Other, other speakers? I'm going to turn, sorry. Counselor Turner, I'm sorry. I didn't, there you are. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, your worship. So I agree with Counselor Deputy Mayor Helmer here. The fact is that this is zoned for, for significant height, and it's in direct conflict with the Heritage Conservation District. Those two need to be reconciled. But that said, there's no question at some point that this building gets developed in some form. The, the process that's happening between the applicant and staff is to work through the challenges and to try and find the path forward that, that reconciles those two parts of our plan. It's not easy, but it's part of the process, and it's going to go back and forth for a little while. Us declining the heritage application alteration permit at this point isn't us saying, no, nothing's going to be built there. And I think we have to acknowledge something will be built there, and something fairly large will be built there. I, I don't think any of us are saying, no, nothing's going to happen there. But we need to be able to find that middle ground between those two parts in our plan and something that's complementary to the neighborhood and its adjacencies. So that's, that's the process. It, I'd imagine, I've heard a lot of arguments saying that, that we absolutely need to have this building. We're encouraging development and inner, inwards and upwards, and absolutely are. And so for us to say, let's, let's keep tweaking on this for a little while to make sure that we get it right, I don't think that's inconsistent with that message of inwards and upwards development. I think it's completely consistent with it. It's just making sure that it's done well and it's done right. The, the applicant, the representative of the applicant said at, at PEC last week that basically they were asserting their development rights on this site. They, they had concerns about the Victoria Park area plan coming forward and perhaps removing some of their development rights on the site. And so they wanted to get something in so that, that they could kind of stamp their claim on that. Fair enough. I, I, I don't disparage them for doing that. I think it's quite appropriate. It makes sense. But it also means that they, they rushed to get something in and that they've got some more time to work on things. This is, this is an early iteration of, of what could go there. I think we, we need to give it the chance to have that debate and that discussion so that something really good ends up on the site because it's some key land. If, if we start hearing arguments about affordability and, and housing stock, I would push strongly back on those. These are not going to be affordable. This is a premium, very luxury site within the city that can command pretty high rents or, or selling prices. And we don't have any tools left to use bonusing. In fact, actually, the application here is not seeking any bonusing. It's looking for what it can develop as of right within the zoning that it has right now. So absolutely, we need to have housing stock within the city. This doesn't address our affordability issues. It does afford, address our, our unit number total within the city, but that's just one, one tick in the box in the whole sheet. So I would hope that my colleagues would vote to decline the heritage application permit at this point. That doesn't mean that they can't come forward with modifications, and we can consider it again in the near future.
Thank you. Counselor Van Holst?
Thank you, your worship. I'm, I'm going to vote to decline the, the refusal. And I, I do so for a number of reasons, but the, I think the big one is that as Counsel, as Deputy Mayor Helmer and Counselor Turner recognize, at, at some point, we've got a conflict that has to be resolved, and we can do that quickly by tearing off a Band-Aid here tonight. And if there's some challenges, we can maybe address those through bonusing as, as well. So that, that's a possibility. The, the thing that we did in, along Hamilton Road is realize if we wanted development, we, it was going to be difficult because the, the, the properties along the street needed a little more room. So what we did was allow, allow that to, allow us to go back, a developer to go back, purchase the property behind it, and then pull that into the, pull that into the development. So what I see our challenge is being here is that we need some kind of transition, but the properties right along Wellington Road aren't, aren't large enough for that transition to happen. So really, that's, that's something that needs to take place just within the, the heritage area. And so I think that's, that's where the change needs to be made. What I want to make sure we do is get the highest and best use of the lands on Wellington Street. And I've heard some complaints about how that might affect the views, et cetera, from the park. But I, I was in the park this summer looking at City Hall from amidst the trees, and you could barely see it. So we're not going to notice those things. This, this fishbowl that people complain about isn't, isn't going to be there. I think that we're going to be much happier with these buildings than without them. I think this is again a move forward, and, and I, I don't know that tweaking this forever and holding, holding developers back and back and back from doing what is the important thing, creating housing in London. So we've got a situation where you, we can't meet every possible constraint, but we can move forward with the things that we know need to be done. And that would be supporting, supporting the development here. So that's the reason I'll vote against this.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship. Well, Counselor Turner and I may not always agree on planning matters. I, I agree with him when he emphasized this is not going to be affordable. He's absolutely right. These are going to be luxury units. Nonetheless, they are units, as he pointed out, in our housing stock, which allows for upward mobility for some folks and frees up units in the lower levels for others. So overall, the positive impact on the housing stock is there, although these will not be affordable themselves. I'm also mindful of the fact that we've heard, well, we'll just, you know, we'll tweak it, and maybe it'll be eight or ten stories. We have to understand that there comes a point where economies of scale on valuable land in the downtown require a certain density to make a project viable. And without that, we will just simply continue to have more surface parking, which we just heard a couple of items ago in the agenda. You know, we want to infill, we want to grow up and inward, and we want to discourage surface parking. And yet, we're potentially creating a situation here where we're preserving surface parking for many more years to come if we keep sending this back for more and more tweaks. My understanding is this has gone through several iterations already, back and forth between the developer and our staff, and concessions have been made by the developer. I think that they've come a long way. You know, the proposal could be, as Deputy Mayor Helmer pointed out, a twenty-six story block. And that would be good for no one. I, I think what we've seen here is some good steps by the developer, who is a reputable, good corporate partner and has been with the city for many, many years as an employer as well. I think it's really key to recognize this is not someone with a pattern of demolish and, and hold surface parking, never do anything with their property. They're a good developer. I, there, there's not heritage value to the property itself. And while I understand the concerns and the idea of Heritage Conservation Districts, you know, I was on Richmond Row last week getting a bite to eat between committee meetings, actually, between Civic Works and SPPC. And as I was returning to City Hall from Richmond Row, it actually struck me that on Angel Street, at Richmond Street, we have street signs that indicate Woodfield Heritage Conservation District. With all due respect to me, or with all due respect to those involved, to me, Richmond Row is not Woodfield. Richmond Row is the downtown. It's part of the core of our city. So if there's policies that need to be reviewed, it might actually be our Heritage Conservation District policies, because what we've created now is a situation where development is being hampered, not because of heritage value on a site, but because of a conservation district. And I, I really struggle to balance those two things. I, you know, I disagree with Deputy Mayor Helmer on the balance. I think that the developer has, has met the balance on this. And I do recognize that there will be different opinions on that. But I'm not going to support the refusal of the heritage alteration permit on this. I'm going to support it going forward if possible. There comes a point where we have to move forward and, and let developers build if we want to discourage these surface parking lots. And for me, this is exactly an example of a good proposal that should be allowed to go forward.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy?
I, I've, I've, I've put the motion on the floor, your worship. If everybody has finished talking, I, I will wrap up, but I don't mind waiting till everybody's done.
Perfect. We'll just see if there are other speakers. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Chair. A while back, we were asked to approve expanding the Heritage District areas. And I asked at that time to staff if that would impede development. And I was told that, no, it would not get in the way of good development planning. Here we have a, a project that has already been zoned for a much higher building, meets the goal of high density in the core. It's a good design with appropriate setbacks. I believe enhances the park. If, if this type of development does not meet what some folks are, are looking for, my fear is that there will be no building or development that will meet those stringent requirements. So I will not support the recommendation from this committee.
Thank you. Counselor Squire?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So first of all, I want to commend my colleagues on, on the debate, particularly Counselor Turner and the Deputy Mayor. Although I won't agree with them on this, they presented very logical, straightforward arguments, which I really appreciated because they were factual, not emotional. And they were very helpful to me, and I appreciate that they, they differ from my point of view. There, there, in addition to, and the only thing I'd like to point out, and another thing that I relied on, there is a report, a Heritage Consultant Report from, from the applicant, from Golda and Associates, that has a different conclusion than our staff. So I think this is a case where reasonable people can disagree. I don't think this is the end of this, but, but I will, I will not be supporting the, I will be supporting the allowance of a heritage permit on this property.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Counselor Morgan to take the chair.
Yep, I have Mayor Holder and then Counselor Kaia Baga.
Thanks very much. Colleagues, as the lone committee member who did not support the committee recommendation, you'll know that we had fairly extensive discussion. I heard, I heard a lot of arguments just a few moments ago about how we don't like parking lots. Well, we know it's there today. I do support the issuance of a heritage alteration permit that would lead to the replacement of that parking lot with an attractive new office building in our downtown. And to Counselor Lewis's comments, there have already been five site plan meetings already over an extended period of time. These, these are full summit meetings, but they take a lot of time. And frankly, if we try to bring some direction to this tonight, my hope is that we will, we will put, we will move this closer to fruition. Look, I'm sensitive to the preservation of the character of the Westwood Field Heritage District. I maintain that the character most worthy of preservation is not well represented by the current streetscape on Wellington. Redevelopment has already replaced the original residences along Wellington Street that were of similar character to most of those in Woodfield. In fact, this streetscape along Wellington Street now currently includes an existing eight-story building, Centennial Hall, Ridge Cooper Square, City Hall, and the subject land, which are operating, as I've indicated, as a surface parking lot. None of these existing uses are at all representative, nor are in character with Woodfield. But today, we have the opportunity to replace that parking lot with an attractive development that will be a valuable addition to our downtown area. And for that reason, I cannot support the refusal of a heritage alteration permit for the parking lot at five fifty six Wellington.
I have Counselor Kaia Baga next, and I'll hand the chair back to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I just wanted to make some comments on the fact that the, the, the comments that were, the recommendations that are made by Latch are recommendations that are easily reconciled. And, and the applicant is a longstanding community partner and will continue to be a community partner. And these are not issues that cannot be reconciled, and they can work with staff and, and, and different folks to reconcile these issues. I would encourage colleagues to support this. We're not losing the building. We're not losing the application. We're not losing the units. This is just to make sure that there is compliance in terms of the heritage requirements that were recommended by Latch. I hope our colleagues will support the recommendations from Latch, and we can then discuss how this longstanding community partner can continue to work with the City of London to provide these very wanted and needed units in the, in the downtown.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I just would like to follow up with the ward counselor downtown. Counselor Kaia Baga said about the importance of working forward with the developer and with staff and the community. We had an extensive public participation engagement. I'm sure we were all privy to seeing the comments, hearing the comments, not only from the applicant, but also from the community. It was a, a very thoughtful and engaging conversation that we had at committee. Before I make a, a final comment, I would like to go through you, your worship, and ask a question to staff about the, the process of this application and where we are with this application in particular. I've heard a few comments about the extensiveness and work and time that has gone on with this application, but I would just like to get an idea of the timelines through you.
So let's ask, ask that question. We'll take that back to staff, please.
Through your worship, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Paul Yeomans to respond to the specifics of the application. Thank you. Through you, your worship. So the application has been proceeding quite well and working through a number of issues. As has been indicated, there have been five submissions to date on the site plan matters. The public site plan is a key milestone to achieve, to work through some comments and questions that were raised by the community that attended the PPM and some of the counselors that provided those comments that have been, been approved through council for consideration. We'll take those back, and we'll have a conversation with the applicant about those matters. So I anticipate that will probably result in a further submission to iron out some of those details. And then from there, it'll probably be pending site plan approval.
Counselor Hopkins?
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Yeoman, because that is something I would like all my colleagues to understand, that that information is ongoing, and there are a number of comments made from the public. And there is that working relationship going on with this application. It's really important to understand that and to encourage that collaboration. So I hope my colleagues will support the refusal, which means that something will be developed here. We're not saying we're going to have a parking lot. We know some development is going to happen. We understand there is a number of conflicts with a number of policies. We haven't even started the Victoria Secondary Plan Conver- We haven't even started the Victoria Secondary Plan conversation and where that is at. But there are ongoing considerations for us to understand and the importance of this development as well, not only to the city, but also to the community. So I would again remind my colleagues that by supporting the refusal does not mean we are not going to be developing here. We will be. And I would encourage you all to support the refusal at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll turn it, oh, I've got Counselor Van Merbergen before you, Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't support the refusal of this application. I think we all know with Great West life behind this development and the various iterations and the back and forth that have already taken place, we can look forward to a first-class development. Clearly, that is far superior to leaving it as a commercial parking lot. If we keep piling on more and more restrictions, making it more difficult, we can look forward to it being a commercial parking lot for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Morgan.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I really appreciate the dialogue and discussion on this one, particularly the comments about how we each individually reconcile competing priorities and different plans. Certainly, the zoning allows for a much more intense structure on this site. I think the surrounding community would like something much, much less intense, and there is probably a great divide of opinion on this. And I'm not convinced that even with a significant amount of more time, that that is going to bridge a reasonable gap. And I think at some point, we're going to have to face a decision on developments of these types in these spaces where they are allowed, irrespective of the Heritage District. So what I do know is, and I recognize that we've passed the London Plan, and I've recognized that we have policies, but I also recognize the context that we're in today as well. And I know that getting units built, creating employment, getting people to live downtown, and having that happen sooner rather than later is an important overlay onto these discussions because there are many businesses in the downtown that are hurting. We need the injection of population. And at some point, I start to become hesitant in, you know, dragging them out for significant, potentially more dialogue when we're likely to come back faced with a decision that still the parties have not come together on. So I'm going to join a number of my colleagues in not supporting the refusal and start to move towards allowing this one to move forward because of some other considerations as well and because I think this is one where a number of colleagues can go either way on it, given, you know, the conflicts in the Heritage Conservation District and the zoning pulling in different directions and the ongoing debate and discussion. So I think the comments are all reasonable tonight, and I think everybody's got to make their own decision on this one.
Thank you. I think it's your turn, Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to clarify one thing about the zoning on this site. It is, this is not in the downtown zone. This is the Woodfield Heritage Conservation District. But the reason this site is actually zoned as if it were in the downtown zone is because there was an oversight made many years ago. The zoning was changed on this particular site when, at a time when City Hall was considering building the convention center at this location. So it was zoned downtown to accommodate a convention center, which never happened, as we all know, and the zoning did not revert back. So it was an oversight at some point way in the past. And this is what has led to the conflict. And the conflict is this particular building and the impact that it will have on a truly Heritage Conservation District. If you take a walk down Woodfield, you will see the buildings that are along that streetscape and how they all meet a certain style and sort of match each other. So absolutely, will something get built on this site? Absolutely. Will it remain a parking lot? No, I do not see that happening. I know that Great West is quite motivated to build something on this site. What did actually come up at the meeting was the fact that when we were talking about impact on neighboring communities, if Great West had come forward with perhaps a tall narrow tower or even a couple of tall narrow towers, it would most likely have had less of an impact on the neighboring community. Because what happens when we try, when we only focus on height, is the building comes down in height and it becomes squat, and it takes up a bigger footprint. And that, it seems to be what is causing the impact and the conflict of this particular design on the neighboring properties, is the fact that it takes up, the mass of the buildings are so large, and they take up a great deal of the footprint of the site, and that's causing greater shadow on more of the properties and more of an impact. So the fact of the Heritage Conservation District just gives us a little bit longer of a pause to allow staff to continue, which they will be doing anyway, but allow Great West and staff to continue to work to come up with a design that will have less impact on this important Heritage District in our community. So everybody has spoken. It's pretty obvious where the votes will be. I just urge people that have already said that they will not support the refusal to consider changing their vote because this will give the developer and staff a longer time to really work on a design that will not impact the neighboring community as much as this design will.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. With that, we will call the vote. This is on the refusal. So to vote yes is to support the refusal, and to vote no is the contrary. Counselor Van Holst?
No.
Counselor Lewis?
No.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Squire?
No.
Counselor Morgan?
No.
Counselor Lehman?
No.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yes.
Counselor Van Merbergen?
No.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi?
No.
Counselor Kaibaga?
Yes.
Counselor Hillier?
No.
I vote no.
Closing the vote, the motion is lost. Five to nine.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will move that the approval of a heritage alteration permit be granted.
Do you have a second?
I will look for one. I believe Counselor-
Counselor Lehman? Thank you. Any further comments? We've had extensive discussions on all of this. Any further comments or questions? For the benefit of those watching, what counselors know is that when a motion's put on the floor, it's up to the clerk then to wordsmith that appropriately, and that gives us then the opportunity to vote. So I thought as a courtesy, you should be aware of that. Counselor Van Holst? Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
No.
Counselor Cassidy?
No.
Counselor Squire?
Yes.
Counselor Morgan?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
No.
Counselor Van Merbergen?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
No.
Counselor Pelosi?
Yes.
Counselor Kaibaga?
No.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion passes. Nine to five.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy, back to you.
That is my report, Your Worship.
You should be pleased. You didn't have to stand. If you were in council, that would have been a long, lengthy time. Thank you very much. We now have the fifteenth report of the Corporate Service Committee. May I call on Counselor Kaibaga, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put the Corporate Service-
On the floor. Does anyone, you're frozen, sorry, Counselor-
Agenda on the floor, and I've not, nobody, no one has indicated that they want to pull anything, so I put the fifteenth report of the Corporate Service Committee on the floor.
Does anyone wish anything dealt with separately? Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we will call the question.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Squire?
Yes.
Counselor Morgan?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yes.
Counselor Van Merbergen?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi?
Yes.
Counselor Kaibaga?
Yes.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
I vote yes. Well, that was easy breezy. Counselor Kaibaga, thanks very much. Well done.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Now it's well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now return to the sixteenth, excuse me, the eleventh report of Civic Works and call on Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Chair. I have had a request to pull fifteen, item four point one, street renaming bylaw, policy, and guidelines. I've had no other requests for any other item.
Does anyone wish any other item dealt with separately? Thank you. Any comments or questions on all but item fifteen, four point one? Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to comment briefly on item- Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to comment very briefly on item seventeen, the low-cost active transportation infrastructure for COVID-19 resilience funding stream from the federal government. Very pleased to have been able to work with Counselor Pelosi and Deputy Mayor Helmer on this and for the committee's support. Through you, I would just like to ask our staff, because prior to this, we had approved the creation of an active transportation manager position. So I wonder if through you, if Ms. Shear could update us on where we are with regard to that position.
Ms. Shear, can you comment?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have completed a job description for the active transportation manager. It has been provided to Human Resources for classification, and our report is nearly ready to bring back to Civic Works Committee. So we're just waiting to see where that position will be classified so we can post and get somebody in place to help deliver these projects, should we have them funded.
Counselor Lewis?
Fantastic. I think that these two initiatives will work really well hand in hand to get some federal money into the city and get some very quick work done on closing some of our active transportation connections that are missing right now. I just really want to thank Counselor Pelosi, who honestly did the lion's share of the heavy lifting on both of those initiatives, and I was happy to be along for the ride. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, with the exception of the one, item fifteen, four point one, we'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Squire?
Yes.
Counselor Morgan?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yes.
Counselor Van Merbergen?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi?
Yes.
Counselor Kaibaga?
Yes.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Counselor Lehman?
I will put item number fifteen, four point one, street renaming bylaw, policies and guidelines on the floor.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Counselor Squire?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I want to thank my colleague for bringing this matter forward. I will not be supporting parts B and parts D of this recommendation. I'm also mindful that at committee, I think a motion was brought forward to eliminate part of B that didn't succeed. So I'm not going to revisit that motion and try to remove that one part. But the first part of B, I don't have a difficulty with, an undertaking review of the city's bylaws to see if there's any recommended changes to support and implement our commitments that have been made. My challenge with B and D are that what I would like to have first, as a city councillor, is I'd like to see the new proposed rules come forward to council. I want to make sure they accomplish what we want to do. I want to make sure that they indeed do move the ball forward on renaming streets, buildings, whatever it may be, where the names are offensive. And I think we all accept at this point in time that there are words that are offensive, and I have no difficulty with making those decisions when I see them. The challenge I have here is that until I see what the rules are, I don't know if we're going to accomplish that. I don't know if it's going to be successful in doing that. Instead, we're sort of doing two things at once. We're asking staff to go back, come up with a new set of rules, and apply them to one particular street before we've seen them. And also, in the last part, to come up with a list of names before we've seen what the new rules are. I'm also really mindful that when we make a change like this, we have full community buy-in. And I want to just expand on that idea. For me, the most successful enterprises that we undertake as a community are where we have community engagement. If I could say, one of our favorite words is to talk about different lenses. One of the, the most important lens to me as a city councillor is a community lens. And by that, I mean everyone in my community has an opportunity to have input in new rules that we're passing. You know, last week, I was a little skeptical of a committee that was doing very good work. The reason is that they had had contact with 170 people when they came to us with their recommendations, in a city of 400,000 people. I don't think there's anything wrong with saying, look, let's come back with what we're going to do, let's make sure it's effective, and then let's start making the changes that I think this community wants to make. And make no mistake about it, I think this community is ready to look at offensive names, names that bother all kinds of people, and make those changes. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So that's where I am. I understand the sensitivity of these subjects. I completely get that. And of course, before I came tonight, my daughter said to me, don't even get up to talk about this matter, Dad. Just vote and don't say anything. But I thought it was important to really make my position clear, that I'm supportive of the idea, I'm supportive of the concept, I'm just not supportive with parts of it that move us beyond the new rules into actual implementation.
We'll talk whether or not any of these wish to be split, but before we do that, let's entertain any other comments or questions, if we could. Counselor Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. And I am pleased to support this recommendation coming from committee and thank Counselor Pelosi for the work that she's done with this. She's done a thorough job. And I've received a number of calls from my residents thinking that we are going to be changing names, plantation, for instance, with this recommendation. And the way I understand it is that we are asking for a review of the rules. They're going to come forward to us, and if names of streets are going to come forward, so be it. I have no problem in supporting A to E without, we'll wait and see what happens. But the debate here tonight is not about renaming plantation, it is about getting a report back. And I really look forward to that conversation that we're going to have here. to that conversation that we're going to have here on council, how we put in that equity lens, that gender lens. There's a lot that we need to understand, and that's what the report's going to be about. So, again, very supportive of the recommendation and thank Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you. Before I ask the question about whether we're looking to separate any of these, are there any other comments or questions? I see Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, your worship. So, many good ideas here, and certainly review is in order. The, I see there's some contention at the committee around the, it being noted, the comments about Plantation Road, and says here that we're including that plantation has a strong correlation to slavery, oppression, and racism, and I guess the thing I might suggest be removed is the word "strong," because that's not necessarily the case for many people. That may not be the association they make. So, for some people, it will be a very strong correlation, for others, it won't. Plantations have existed over centuries in time and over many places in the world, and then if we looked at how much slavery existed on all of those, I don't know if that'd be a strong correlation if we did that sort of statistic on it, but nevertheless, I think that that particular word is up for interpretation, whereas the others are very reasonable, right? So, it's absolutely, there's a correlation. I think people would be happy to say that was the case. It's just, is that association happening on this street in the context of London? That seems to be where the, where the controversy is. So, maybe I'll just leave it with those comments.
Thank you. Counselor Van Mirbergin.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important that this report that comes back deals with two things, one of them, among others, but these two things. First, the costs that are involved, how it's foreseen they're going to be dispersed or spread out, who's responsible for these costs, that can be addressed in the report, and also, as Counselor Squire touched upon, the consultation, proper community consultation, particularly on plantation itself, the residents who live there. So, these are the factors certainly that I'll be looking for, and perhaps I can just ask staff if they could note to us if that indeed would be part of a report coming back.
Well, let's ask staff that question, please.
Through you, your worship, it's Mr. Yeoman. Our interpretation of B is that, in order to effect that, we would come back to committee and council with a draft terms of reference for consideration, and that terms of reference would speak to the project's scope, the review criteria for the initiative, stakeholder engagement, community engagement, as well as financial implications as well associated with the review. That way council can then continue to have the conversation, refine expectations for the review, and give us further direction based on that.
Counselor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Kaia Baga, please.
I think, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask a question to staff. Is there a current existing policy on street naming?
Mr. Yeoman?
Through you, your worship, we do have a policy, excuse me, we have street naming guidelines that were adopted in their early nineteen nineties. Right now, separate to this initiative, we have been, from an administrative perspective, undertaking a review of those guidelines to update them to be current with a number of other municipalities, and to provide a proper policy for council consideration as part of your council policy manual. So, that work is underway as well, and so this would be an extension of that.
Counselor?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor, again, what is the current procedure to have a street names?
Mr. Yeoman?
Through you, your worship, happy to provide that. So, the current process involves an individual submitting an application for street naming. From there, that application is received by staff, it's reviewed for completeness, and for any technical concerns associated with the name, we have a internal group that we circulate for any conflicts from any EMS perspective for health and safety, for any other duplication of other streets and other concerns that some internal departments may have. From there, we prepare a background report on the proposal to submit to committee with some history on the street name, if we have that available to us as well. We then provide that information and request direction from council as to whether or not you wish to undertake a PPM to actually consider the street renaming. So, if that's approved, then we go out and actually have a PPM that's held where members of the public can weigh in on the proposal, and then from there, council makes a determination on how they'd like to proceed with the street renaming, whether or not they wish to approve that with a different name, or whether they wish to deny the request.
Counselor Baga?
Thank you. I think, I just want to get a clarification on this, because through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Yeoman and I had this discussion back in twenty nineteen of last year, I think it was end of last year, and we talked about street naming and the policies around that, and it was my understanding that a developer, basically, when they purchase a land, they're given a list of names from the landowner, and oftentimes, these are family names, or, you know, names that the landowner holds, you know, dear to them, and then they make a deal with the developer, and the developer then submits those names, which can be used, but there's also a database at the City of London that the city could use instead of the developer names, in case a developer did not submit those names. Am I correct with that?
Mr. Yeoman?
That was.
Through you, your worship, I'm happy to provide clarification on that. So, when a proposed development comes forward with new streets, we do maintain a list at the city of pre-approved street names that we suggest to the developer that they may wish to consider. Generally, those names are adopted by the developer, and they then form the new streets in our new communities. However, if a developer does have requests for certain streets that they'd like to name, we receive those names. We put it through the process that identified similar to street renaming, where we circulate an internal committee. If there are no conflicts or concerns that arise from that, then those street names proceed towards approval with the end subdivision. As I mentioned, the policies that we have are from the early nineties, and they are quite, I would say, not quite up to date in terms of a lot of other municipalities.
Counselor Baga?
Oh, thank you. So, regardless of this current street, there's been an ongoing plan from staff to revise street naming, because I think, Mr. Yeoman, if he could remember, we did have this conversation last year, and this is work that we also started with the indigenous communities in the urban area and the outside, the three communities that are surrounding London, and we started talking about street naming and including indigenous names going forward. We didn't really discuss on what the policy would be around changing specific names, but we did talk about revising the policy. So, I don't think, I don't see this being completely different from what the councillor is putting forward. I would support the motion to revise the street naming policy and how that's done, because I think it's important that our community understands that street names often happen through a submission of names through developers and landowners versus where there isn't a submission of names, and the city often looks at different names that they have in the database. So, if we're trying to have a different outcome in terms of street naming and honoring the indigenous communities and other people in our community that not necessarily own a land or are not developers, then it is through this process in which we have to do this. I will support this motion. I personally do not have any specific connection or feelings towards Plantation Road. As a member of the Black community, as a Black woman, I don't feel heavily offended by the specific word. There are far more things in our society today that we need to combat when we talk about combating systemic racism, but this is, perhaps, could be another layer. But I will support this motion, because this is something that we talked about, we've been working on with different community members, to try and address the process in which street naming happens in our city. It is biased, it is, it's elitist, in my opinion, because it's only through owning a land that you can recognize different contributions that have happened in our community. So, I think there should be a better process in which different people in our community who have contributed could, you know, be named on different streets, and as well as honoring the different indigenous people who have held our land in the past. So, this is the reason why I'll support this motion. I would encourage council to support the motion to review this specific policy. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Morgan?
Thank you, your worship. The comments I were going to make have been made by colleagues, so I'll withdraw.
Counselor, if I could ask you to take the chair?
Sure, I have Mayor Holder.
Thanks very much, colleagues. I'm prepared to support the motion. I think what's very clear to me is that I think Counselor Van Mirbergin, Counselor Kaia Baga, really, I think, addressed a couple of things that are important, and we heard from staff. We're talking about establishing terms of reference, which I think, when we look at a policy that's upwards of thirty years old, that's not inappropriate, and also the process, which is what Counselor Kaia Baga made reference to. So, Counselor Pelosi, the fact you brought it forward, I salute that, and I hope colleagues will support this understanding that what we're going to have come back to us will be terms of reference that we can look at, and I think we can then get into any fulsome debate that's appropriate at that time, but at least we'll know the rules of the game and understand what it is that we're dealing with in this, I think, very important matter. Thank you.
I have Counselor Pelosi next, and I'll hand the chair back to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and thank you to colleagues for this discussion tonight. Thank you to Counselor Kaia Baga and Counselor Sally for advanced discussions with this. Also, thank you to community partners, Black Lives Matter London, the African-Canadian Federation of London, an area being Akfola, and the London Black History Coordinating Committee. I spent the summer meeting with some of their members, joined their meetings, and having a conversation back and forth about how policies can be exclusionary, how they face some barriers to accessing City Hall, and even finding the right departments, even when saying Development Services, there's an application on the website, even I had difficulty finding it. So, just highlighting some of those issues with how we even operate here. I mentioned it at Civic Works, I'll mention it again, by no means am I saying this is the biggest impact we can have in addressing anti-oppression, anti-racism, but it is one that lays within the purview of municipally-elected officials, being us. It is our jobs to be leaders in this. Had discussions behind the scenes with Mr. Yeoman and his department, and it was great to find out that they were already looking to what other colleagues in different cities do, but needed the tools and the opportunity to bring their ideas forward into community engagement as well. Hearing questions from colleagues at committee and between committee and now, just to address them, that we did hear from Mr. Yeoman that there was could be coming back, terms of reference, scope of project, for it's very clear and concise of what we're looking at doing, and the price tag associated with any actions we may decide to take in the future. Mr. Yeoman's department will also bring back several different tools we could use in addition to simply street renaming. Is there an opportunity to do public education with placards, sign toppers, and so forth? So, they'll bring back other tools for us to do, as well as the community engagement piece. Some councillors might be familiar with the Streets of Honor program that we have at the city. Specifically, the London Black History Coordinating Committee was asking for a way to submit names that are prominent from a historical context, and a way to bring those names forward, as there's not really an avenue right now for them to bring that forward. So, that was their specific request through consultation. That's how part D got to be here. So, for me, this was community engagement. I did have some people write, as I'm sure you did, colleagues, over the last few days, sent them the actual policy and said it will be a community conversation going forward. They were happy to hear that. Also, to note, in Development Services, they already have the staff on hand to do this. There's going to be no future budget ask to actually develop the report for us. That's already done in their current staff complement, and if Counselor Squire or anyone else would like them separated into different portions, by all means, please do so.
Thank you. I see no other speakers on this, so Counselor Lehman, please, go ahead.
I just want to thank my colleagues. We had further comments tonight. We had an extensive discussion at committee. The street that has kind of triggered this is in my ward, so I just want to make it very clear to those folks that live on that street and in the area that have reached out to me, this is not a vote at this time to change any street names. What we're looking at right now is to relook a process that deals with naming our streets in our town, which is twenty years old, and I think, especially in these times, needs, we need to have a process to help us do the right thing as we strive to end racism and do what we can in the City of London. You can already see by the comments, when we get down to it, a lot of opinions on both sides. I think having a clear process, properly vetted by staff, that as another councillor mentioned, with true costs, both to staff time and taxpayers, and especially with those that live on the street affected, and also with proper input by Londoners, and by those who, again, live on the street. I'm sure that I trust staff to have all those factors considered, and look forward to the process that they will be presenting us.
Thank you. Perhaps seeing no other speakers, but I wonder if I could turn over to Counselor Squire for just a moment, and please, I believe he wants this separated, this recommendation, please.
Yes. Because the discussion is substantially, substantially different than the actual motion, I am still compelled to vote against B and D, and I would like them pulled separately.
And are you comfortable, Counselor, those being jointly voted on?
Yes.
Indeed? All right, thank you. Any other issues in terms of dealing with those separately? So, that means we'd be voting on A, C, and E initially, and then separately B and D together, if colleagues are comfortable with that? So, that being the case, I'll turn it back to the clerk to get this organized. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
A, C, and E. The ones you wish pulled are in a separate vote?
No, I indicated I wanted to vote against B and E.
Oh, I apologize. I misunderstood that. You're looking to vote against D and E?
No. B and E.
I have B and D pulled. Counselor?
I'm sorry. This whole discussion is just confusing because of the, I want to vote against B and D.
Well, then, if that's the case, we're voting on A, C, and D, you'll be pleased to know. And your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Morgan?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yes.
Counselor Van Mirbergin?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi?
Yes.
Counselor Kaia Baga?
Yes.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
And colleagues, the two items that we're voting together that is asked to be pulled for a separate vote are items B, like baby, D, like duck, which was a wine in the old days. In a moment, we'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
No.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes.
Counselor Van Mirbergin.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi.
Yes.
Counselor Kaia Baga.
Yes.
Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion passes thirteen to one.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, your worship. That concludes the eleventh report of the Civic Works Committee.
Thank you. You probably wished you were home doing this remotely. You could have saw it all the time. All right, thank you very much. Colleagues, I'll now turn your attention to the sixteenth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. Deputy Mayor Helmer, please.
Thank you. I know that Counselor Turner has a pecuniary interest. He's declared for four point one, so I won't put that on the floor. And then I will need somebody else to move four point three A, as I did not support that at committee. Otherwise, I'm going to put the entire report on the floor, the exception of the appointment to the Library Board, which Counselor Morgan has declared a pecuniary interest.
So colleagues, I'm sorry, who, Counselor Van Holst, is that you? I can't.
Yes, perhaps you could pull number eleven. I prefer to vote against that. Four point four.
Thank you. Any other items colleagues wish to have dealt with separately? So Deputy Mayor, we have all but items. Do you want to just articulate those again, please? That we're going to vote on separate from those pulled?
I have everything except for four point one, four point three, four point four, and four point five.
Any discussion on those, on the items with the exclusion of four, one, three, four, and five? Any comments or discussion? Counselor Turner? Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. I'm just trying to figure out the right way to grab your attention there. Hold on my hand on the screen. With respect to two point three or Item Three, I wonder if I might be able to ask a question through you to the treasure. In assessment growth funding, when we spoke about this at our last meeting, we changed up the order a little bit, so I didn't have, I kind of got lost in it and didn't have the opportunity to ask. Assessment growth funding with respect to the paramedic services budget, the impacts that it's going to have both this year and upcoming years. Is there an opportunity to investigate assessment growth for use to offset some of those impacts? Recognizing the 2020 has already been funded, but the process, I think, is the challenge. It's how to get that onto the agenda. We've got six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that's going into reserves and to debt relief, which really doesn't decrease our tax assessment components in this year. So my concerns are in future years that we might further exacerbate that.
Ms. Barbone?
Thank you, through the chairs. So with the assessment growth, the policy as it currently stands is whenever there is anything that remains from any allocations, that that does get carried forward into the following year and would be available for use for future business cases that would come forward in 2021. So that amount is applied by policy this year and goes against the debt and the other half to the reserve as we had identified. And then the remainder for the flow-through, because it's assessment growth, will get carried forward for 2021. So when business cases come forward in 2021, that would be an opening balance that would be there, that would be allocated towards whatever costs come forward with respect to growth in 2021.
Counselor Turner?
Thank you, Ms. Barbone. The challenge, I guess, right now is kind of the disconnect in the cycles between the city and the county's budget process. And hopefully, this gets to be rectified. We still haven't heard a word from county on whether they've accepted our nomination to the board for the authority. But one of the opportunities here is that as as service growth has to increase associated with our population growth, that it would make sense that those services associated with growth were eligible for assessment growth funding. I don't think County Council has made any requests to that process before. I'm not sure if they're familiar with it. I think it's a way to help offset a bit of the pressure on our base budget. And I think it's a discussion that we need to have, because it seemed as we've had numerous discussions with the county that they were unfamiliar with that process and that it wasn't really raised as a viable option through our discussions. So I just wanted to point that out right now. And it might not be the answer for everything, but it's something that I think we need to contemplate.
And are you looking for a comment from Ms. Barbone, Counselor?
Perhaps.
Perhaps a comment from you then, Ms. Barbone?
Yes, thank you, through the chairs. So certainly, in past years, we did encourage and work with the county to be able to put forward an assessment growth business case. Certainly, I'm not sure if there will be additional discussion that will come forward, but as part of our 2021 update, if there is any additional information that we could put forward, that would certainly allow us to always make a change if we needed to, if there was additional information to support the portion that was growth that we could put forward in, through the assessment growth, and that would allow it to come off the budget. So we are still waiting for confirmation of what potential numbers would be requested for the budget in 2021. We have put forward an estimate based on 2020's discussion in the multi-year budget. But of course, through future discussions, when the county does approve the land ambulance budget, there may be some amounts that differ that would allow us to allow, work through that process. So we will continue to be in communication with them and look if there's any way we can assist them in trying to utilize that process if it's appropriate going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Ms. Barbone. Any other discussion with respect to the items on the floor, which excludes the pulled items? And I'm now looking for hand-waving or raised hands. Seeing none, we'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Squire?
Blue Jays, zero, Rays, zero, yay.
Thank you. Counselor Morgan?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yes.
Counselor Van Meerebergen?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi?
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga?
Yes.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion passes fourteen to zero.
I'm surprised Counselor Squire didn't stand on a point of order. We now have, back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I'll put four point one on the floor. This is the staff report on the mandatory face covering bylaw and the receipt of the delegations, which we heard at SBPC.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Squire?
Yes.
Counselor Morgan?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yes.
Counselor Van Meerebergen?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
Excuse.
Thank you. Counselor Pelosi?
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga?
Yeah.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries thirteen with one recused.
Deputy Mayor?
I'll need someone to move four point three A. Perhaps Counselor Morgan, as the Chair of the Governance Working Group, could do that.
Counselor Morgan?
Yeah, I'm happy to move four point three A, which is the first report of the Governance Working Group.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
No.
Counselor Cassidy?
No.
Counselor Squire?
Yes.
Counselor Morgan?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
No.
Counselor Van Meerebergen?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
No.
Counselor Pelosi?
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga?
No.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries nine to five.
Deputy Mayor?
I can put B and C on the floor. That's to receive the report and to make sure that those agendas are published on the website, which were the other two clauses. Happy to move that.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Squire?
Yes.
Counselor Morgan?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yes.
Counselor Van Meerebergen?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi?
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga?
Yes.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
I will put four point four on the floor. This is the motion to receive the communication from Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Counselor Van Holst?
Thank you, worship. I'll, because I'm going to make a comment that my hope was for us to have a discussion about whether London has got the ideal governance structure right now. I believe that's not the case. I was disappointed that we don't want to look into that and consider possible improvements. But at this point, I'll, with my comment, support the receipt of my communication.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Squire? Counselor Morgan?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yes.
Counselor Van Meerebergen?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi?
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga?
Yes.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
Brings us to Item four point five, which is the appointment to the London Public Library Board. Colleagues, remember, we had three rounds of voting. This has been pulled because Counselor Morgan has declared a pecuniary interest. I will put forward the motion to appoint Chelsea Smith to the Board of the London Public Library.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Squire?
Yes.
Counselor Morgan?
Epstein.
Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yes.
Counselor Van Meerebergen?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi?
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga?
Yes.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries thirteen with one recused.
Deputy Mayor?
And that's it for SBPC.
Well, thank you for that. Well, stay standing, because we are now at the third report of the Audit Committee, and back over to you, please.
Thank you. I'm happy to put the full report of the Audit Committee on the floor. I will say, we had the external audit on the 2019 year. And I want to say that our finance staff and the external auditors did an excellent job managing through the audit process despite the challenges posed by COVID-19. We had a very good discussion at committee about some of the items in the audit report and the financial report from the city. I'm sure finance staff will be happy to answer any questions if colleagues have them. Second, I want to indicate that there were some changes made to the internal audit plan. And you'll see those adjustments that have been suggested by the Audit Committee. One of the things we did at our previous Audit Committee meeting was direct staff to take a look at what could be adjusted. There are different priorities, given the impact of the pandemic, especially when it comes to staff resources in terms of undertaking and working with the internal auditors. And you'll see that there's a new item, for example, looking at time management system on the police service, which is new, and the police are keen to work on that.
Any comments or questions from colleagues? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Squire?
Yes.
Counselor Morgan?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yes.
Counselor Van Meerebergen?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Pelosi?
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga?
Yes.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Deputy Mayor? Can I say thank you, Deputy Mayor, for both the SBPC report and the Audit Committee as well? Appreciate it. Colleagues, there are no added reports and no deferred matters. I have not been made aware of any inquiries, and I have not been made aware of any emergent motions.
Oh, may I make an inquiry, your worship?
Counselor Van Holst?
Thank you very much. And through you to our staff, does our mask bylaw, would that allow us to create a booth, a Plexiglas booth where our visitors could speak to us without a mask? Those people visiting, those delegates from visiting the various committees?
I'll turn that over to staff. Not sure whom. Ms. Livingston, who would that be? I'm sorry, that's not coming through clearly at all. Can I stop you? And we'll see if we can clarify the voice quality on that.
Sorry, it's George Kostas. Can you hear me now?
Much better. Thank you, Mr. Kostas.
My apologies. We could work with our clerk and our facilities group to see if there's a way we can modify those rooms in that manner to comply with the bylaw. But typically, in any public space, folks are required to wear the mask. So we would have to see if there's a way that we could do it so that it would still be a compliance.
Counselor Van Holst, does that satisfy your question?
I'm very satisfied. Thank you, your worship.
That's important. Thank you. I am not aware of any emergent motions. Therefore, that moves us to bylaws, which are Bills two seventy-seven through two ninety-eight. I'll be looking for a mover and seconded for introduction first reading of Bills two seventy-seven through two ninety-eight. Do I have a mover, please? Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Lehman, will call the vote. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy?
Yes.
Counselor Squire? Counselor Squire.
Yes.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes.
Counselor Van Mirberggen.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
Yes.
Counselor Palozza. Counselor Kayabaga.
Yeah.
Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. And for second reading of Bills 277 through 298, I will look for a mover, please. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, clerk, please, ahead of me.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 to 0.
Never get ahead of the clerk. That's the advice here. So for second reading of Bills 277 through 298, I'll look for a mover and a seconded, moved by Counselor Hillier, seconded by Counselor Van Mirberggen. Any discussion? I see none, we will call the vote. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
Yes.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes.
Counselor Van Mirberggen.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
Yes.
Counselor Palozza.
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga.
Yes.
Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 to 0.
And for third reading and enactment of Bills 277 through 298, I'll look for a mover, please. Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Van... Oh, Counselor Van Holst. Counselor Van Holst.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy.
Yes.
Counselor Squire.
Yes.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes.
Counselor Van Mirberggen.
Yes.
Counselor Turner.
Yes.
Counselor Palozza.
Yes.
Counselor Kayabaga.
Yes.
Counselor Hillier.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 to 0.
And colleagues, just before we adjourn, I'd like to give a specific shout-out to the clerks. They're kind of the unsung heroes of this that keep these meetings moving as well as they can, notwithstanding the quality of the chair. So I'd like to give them a shout-out and thank them for the work they do, and to all of our staff on the call and to your teams. We've gone through some pretty interesting times and a pretty interesting weekend, but you know, we're in this together. And all on behalf of the citizens of London, I'd like to acknowledge the great work that you do and say thanks from all of council to you. With that, I'll look for a mover to adjourn the meeting. Deputy Mayor Helmer, seconded by Counselor Van Mirberggen. Let's do a hand vote, shall we? All those in favor?
Motion carries.
Colleagues, meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.